All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for joining us for the selectmen's meeting. Would everyone please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No announcements tonight. We have approval of minutes and warrants for October 5th at 6:00 PM. And I'll have to abstain from that.
Motion to approve these minutes of October 5th at 6:00 PM.
All in favor?
Aye.
And abstain. And then also, October 7th, 2015, and that was at 7:00 PM. And I have to abstain from that one.
Motion approved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
I do have warrants this evening. First is the payroll warrant for the pay period ending October 17th, 2015, in the amount of $34,670.04. I have the payroll deductions from the last payroll for October 5th in the amount of $5,689.29. And the current vendor warrant dated October 19th in the amount of $129,918.05. And I just call to the board's attention, that amount is high due to the BVT assessment. And also, there's a rubbish payment in there, that's what kicked that out. And that's it for warrants.
Motion to accept the warrants is read.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have no invited guests or speakers here tonight. Next, we have Board Committee Department Heads. First on the agenda is Historical Commission.
Hi, Lee, nice to see you. Long while, thank you.
Good, good. Margaret couldn't make it tonight, so she sent me.
Okay.
In her absence. It's not going to take too long, there's not too much on here for the report. The Historical Commission still meets every first Tuesday of the month, with the exception of July and August. Some of the major things this year that took place. We did delay the project of the stones out front, because we don't know what the future's going to hold, if this building will even be here, so we put that on a back burner for now.
Okay.
And also, closing the room upstairs due to structural hazards. We did put all that stuff in safe areas, start it, till we see what happens down the road, and we can take it back out. There's about 25 years' collection up there, as you know, photographs and everything. I believe the only thing that's still in that room is a couple of small desks and some of the tin from the Old Town Hall. And a table, that's about it that's left in there.
Okay.
What else is yet on here? There are still same members on the Historic Commission, okay, being Emo Berchellet, Margaret Carroll, Yelena Etia, Marie Gorven, and myself. Okay, we're still on the board. We are doing a lot of work right now for the Centennial, that's the big upcoming plans. We're going to be having guest speakers throughout the town. This was one of the building, we plan on doing some of the presentations, but again, we don't know what's going to happen, but we have the senior center, the community center up on Chester Hill, that will be doing PowerPoints on historic events in the town for the Centennial, and there's a lot of other stuff we're planning for that also. And one of the other things that she really wanted me to bring up, that I'm going to be honest with you, I'm not that familiar with, I didn't talk much to her on that, was I guess the Town Hall Longfellow Municipal Center Facility Condition Assessment Report. I guess there was some incorrect information in there that's being looked into. While the building has significant, an original Longfellow school, 1850, in check with the federal and state historic registers, doesn't exist. Okay, their dates are not correct, and that's some of the stuff that we're going to be looking into and get rectified.
Okay.
Other than that, there's not too much to report. We do have a section upstairs that we had slated, put aside for the veterans, along with the other walls, and the ones that we had put aside were for the Korean, Vietnam, Iraq, and Desert Storm. We wanted to put all the people on the wall up there that served. I don't know what's going to happen now with that, but the ones we were going to have put up there would have been removable, so if we had to move anywhere, okay, they're not like the big ones that are on the other walls.
Okay.
Any questions for me?
So your goal for the next year is just focusing on that, the Centennial and...
The Centennial and the veterans' names, we've been working on quite a bit, because we'd really like to get that done. It's been a long time waiting, really need to get done.
And do you need anything from this board?
The only thing is that we still do have that area up there put aside for us, that wall up there, for that. Okay, all right, because I know there's a mark on the wall where we project to put them. And Emo Berchellet's working very hard on getting those done.
Okay.
If anyone here knows anyone that served in the Korean, Vietnam War, or the others I mentioned, you want to get your paperwork into us. We have notices out all through the town advising everyone, whoever lived in Millville during those conflicts, those wars, to get their name to us, so we don't miss anyone. That's important.
Does that include Desert Storm?
Yes, it does, yes. I believe Desert Storm was not a war, it was a conflict. Yes, it's there. It's there. Desert Storm, when did I mention? Iraq, Vietnam, and Korea, World War I and II were already up there.
Excuse me. Great. Thank you for your time.
Rich, Rich has to be on the board.
Well, Rich, sorry.
They didn't mention that. What they did is looked into wars and conflicts. Okay, and I believe the only thing we were going to have up there were the wars. But, believe me, we can look into it, definitely, definitely. Our meetings are Tuesdays, the first Tuesday every month. Feel free to be there if you like. Okay, we'll take all the input we can.
Great, thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Council on Aging. And also, I would like to thank Representative Carroll for...
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Richard Hurtco and Mrs. Ellen Bowen for the Council on Aging.
I just want to preface this report by saying, if you don't mind, I haven't hear ya, that we are really lauding the efficiency of our outreach coordinator, Jill Anderson, and all the work and dedication she has displayed to benefit the Millville seniors and her untiring assistance on behalf of the Council on Aging. And I'm the Vice President of the Council, and the President has had surgery, so she isn't able to come. So, if you want to go ahead there, Richard, that's fine.
Okay, some of the statistics that we've accomplished. There have been 52 residents received over $42,000 worth of oil under the Fuel Assistance Program during 2015 winter season. Some folks did file renewals on their own. We have 198 people that have used the Senior Center from July 14th to June 15th, enjoying Thursday luncheons, attendance, had classes, riding the van, receiving flu shots and so forth. There are about 520 seniors in Millville, and over 30% of the seniors come to the center for services and all receive good information on a monthly newsletter, which we circulate, which continues to be circulated both electronically and by mail, keeping seniors informed as to local activities as well as upcoming programs at the Senior Center. Forty-seven residents received flu shots in October of 2015. We've had 41 blood pressure screening sessions, 47 exercise classes, 46 line dances, line dance classes, 716 lunches served, and approximately 2,000 breakfasts distributed. We also offer weekly pitch games, craft sessions, and oil painting lessons. This summer, we received a grant to implement an age mastery 12-week program, and 30 people registered. Topics covered medication, nutrition, financial planning, exercise, dental health, technology. A graduation ceremony was held at the end of the 12-week program, clemating with a special luncheon. We cooperate with police and fire departments in planning their presentations at the club meetings, also work with the Board of Health, testing for water quality, planning flu clinics, and posting important notifications such as information on West Nile virus or Lyme disease. We currently have three fully certified van drivers, and we are coordinating various trips of interest for seniors and disabled residents of Millville, with the prime focus on transportation and medical visits. Some of the trips that we're planning for the seniors was La Salette and some, a lot of ideas are being thrown out there for the seniors to start utilizing the van. I think it was two weeks ago that we had our third certified van driver, so things will start picking up now that we have these three certified drivers. There was a committee which I was on for the purchase of the stove. We've met two or three times on the purchase of the stove, and I believe a decision has been rendered for a stove of approximately $5,500. I'm getting quotes now. I believe that the award was for somewhere in a neighborhood of $10,000. So we've sharpened our pencils and we were able to find something that'll accommodate the needs currently and future needs of the senior club for that dollar amount. Any questions from the board?
My standard two questions.
Okay.
What are your goals for this coming year? I mean, nothing formal, I'm just...
No, there's not, no, this... Well, we're looking forward to expanding the current programs that we have, and also, possibility of opening on a Wednesday, along with the Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday, but we'd have to discuss that further with the selectmen, I'm sure. And also, what was the other thing? Currently, we just do lunches on Thursdays now, but possibly Tuesday, that's in the future also. And your other question was, what would you like from us? Okay.
Besides more money in the finance budget.
Okay, well, we work very well with what we have, so, you know.
I know everybody, you guys took a big hit and you're slowly coming back, so we know that money's an issue.
Yeah, we're doing well, thank you. Well, we have submitted a name for an alternate. We have, we're able to have three alternates on the council. Right now, we only have one, but we did submit a name for your consideration. So we look forward to your appointing that alternate. And there's another one coming along, you might have for your next meeting. That's what I like from you.
Okay.
And if there's anything else, I'll see you after the meeting.
If statistics were taken, you could see the increase of activity from last year to this year, and now with the van drivers, and once we have a new stove that we're not worried about using, there'll be more activities along that line with meals. So we see a lot of increased activity and a lot of fun. We were, we were, we were given the opportunity of Mr. Kevin Kuros's presence today at the Halloween slash dinner. We had costumes, we had a great time. The numbers at the meal keeps growing. It's just looking positive every day. And we appreciate the support that the selectmen has given the Council on Aging.
I have one question.
Yep.
Your stove.
Yep.
Is that a new stove?
We, we had a committee that was created to look into the best possible stove for the price and to accommodate the needs of the center. That will be a new stove.
Did you look into reconditioned stoves?
No, we haven't. Because what we purchased seven years ago was a reconditioned stove, which was about 10 or 15 years old. And I believe the capital planning committee and the, at the annual town meeting, allocated approximately $10,000. We're now at like $5,500 with the understanding that the surplus will go back to the general fund. So we're trying to get something that's safe and will have a long lifespan versus something that is okay today and may not be tomorrow. Because it's hard to get warranties and everything else that comes with a reconditioned stove.
My wife checked with her vendors, John.
Yeah, I just a question.
And the used equipment was a small percentage cheaper.
Yeah, there's probably a 10, 15% discount on reconditioned. And again, it's, the reconditioned stove may not be compliant with today's safety standards and everything, and with a gas stove, we want to make sure that it's, it's safe. Any other questions?
All right, thank you for your time, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
Finance Committee, Rich, you're up.
Good evening, everyone. Our committee was pretty active the last fiscal year, building for FY16. Hopefully, we'll have an equally active season this year. Our committee was made up of myself as the chair, Kelly Capizoli is the vice chair, Mary Ryan is the secretary, and members Brooks Herrick and Mike Foster. Since that time, on June 30th, we've had Mary Ryan and Kelly Capizoli have moved on and resigned their positions from the board. Mary had been on the board, I think, over 40 years on that. Long time, lots of institutional knowledge on it. And Kelly was here before I was. It's my intent to wait until the Spring Town Meeting, and then I'd like to recognize both of them at the town meeting. I think at that time, there'll be a bigger turnout, specifically Mary. She gave a lot of her time to the town over many, many years, and I think it's appropriate that we recognize that, so. I'd be looking to do something with the selectmen, the certificates from the state, possibly the federal government, I think. Whatever we can do, and something from the town to express our appreciation of those many, many years on that. Follow-up on that is a need to find new members who want to serve on the board. Try to talk to Les and see what I can come up with with that, and start looking in that direction. We really had three main themes this year. Fiscal discipline, live within our means, and plan for the future. We work closely with your board through Helen, who is at every one of our meetings. We developed a budget package together. Normally, selectmen would develop the package through the executive secretary, submit it to the finance committee, then debate it. We took it a little bit different. We both worked together to develop that package together as the budget requests came in from the various departments. And I think that worked good, that worked out very well together on that. Early on, we developed seven goals for our board. And those goals were how we were going to approach the budget process in the coming year. And from those goals, we developed our priorities. And really was, we were going to maintain our services at current levels, start looking at bringing up the level of services provided to the residents before the recession, bring them back to that pre-recession time, and then build from there. We didn't want to fall any further back than we already were, but we wanted to grow. I think we saw some successes, particularly in the library. The library, we added additional funding to. Council of Aging on that, there was some discussion about the stove. A lot of debate went on for that stove, for that appropriation, as to what it was. It's $10,500, not to exceed, between the capital planning and the finance committee. And so, hearing from them tonight that that number has come down makes me feel good, because they went out and really did some work on that. Because at the beginning, it was a cut sheet that they had for one type of stove, and said, okay, this is what we want. Then we said, okay, this is going to be a ceiling that you can go. And that has to include both the purchase of the stove, the installation, and the removal of the old stove. So I think the process is working, and I think it's coming good. And I appreciate you commenting on asking if they went out and looked in different directions on that, because that's a good thing. Due diligence, absolutely, on that. Modest capital investment. The capital planning committee met several times. They presented us with a plan, and we came up with a way ahead on some of those capital investments, and I'll get into that a little bit later. Fund the Blackstone Millville Regional School District at levels that we can afford. They have their budget process, we have our budget process. They came in with a number that was, was high, in our opinion, based on what we could afford as a town. We worked with them, we worked with the finance committee over in Blackstone, and we came up with a number that Millville could afford. Blackstone looked at that number and said, okay, we'll match that. It wasn't all what the school committee wanted, but it was a better approach than we've had, I think, in previous years that I've been on the board. So I see that as a success to the future. They're going to go into some long-term planning to come up with a long-term plan, so we know what they're, where they're going and how much it's going to cost in the future. They've been through a difficult time, they've been, they've had seven superintendents, I think, in 11 years on it. I think they're going to get some stability now with Alan Himmelberger. He was a pleasure to work with last year, and I hope for the same this year. And we wanted to grow the stabilization account. This one, we see that as part of our future, part of our ability to do things, not so much taking and using as a capital, but using that as our anchor to possibly borrow to do some of the bigger projects that we need to do in the future. And seeing that the town has a strong stabilization account would help us in that regard. We weren't as successful as we hoped to in that. And I'll get into that a little bit later. We had some major budget increases. Most notably, the Worcester County retirement went up quite a bit. Health insurance up every year. And the schools across the board. The Blackstone Millville Regional School District, Norfolk Aggie, Tri-County. The one we didn't have an increase on was the BVT. And Mr. Finn was quite upfront with us and said, we worked at that this year, and we came up with a budget that works. It just happens not to impact Millville that hard this year. Next year is going to be different. Next year, they're not going to be able to do some of the things they did. And I think the student load from Millville is going to be higher next year than it is this year. The other one was the, I think I did talk about the library, we got the certification back. We did increase communications and budget, some with the police department. They did something different with how they managed their IT issues. And the town managed them a bit differently. So they have two different IT organizations now, and that was a bit of an increase in cost. Not so much that it's going to impact us too much in the future. Getting back to the capital. Capital submitted us a plan, it was five years out. They had multiple projects, there was some that wanted to be funded this year and some into the out-years. So what we did was, we looked at the dollars available, and we funded what we did, we needed for '16. Particularly, it was the new stove, technology refresh in the town hall. And we put money towards the water tank, yeah, it's a water tank, at the Millville Elementary School. We also put money towards projects that are going to come due in the out-years, particularly for the police department. We funded $10,000 for a police car that's going to come due in '19. $18,000 that was going to come due this coming year. And we put money towards a new ambulance in FY19. So, doing that, when we get to that budget year, we always already have money set aside for those purchases on that. Hopefully, we can continue that into this coming year.
I said money to put in capital.
If we have some money to put there, if we can keep doing it. Here is a concern, I mentioned earlier, the loss of members on the FinCom. Hopefully, we can get two new members to replace some very big shoes with Mary Ryan and Kelly. And hopefully, there's some townspeople that'll step up and want to get involved and work with us on that. Biggest concern is, and you mentioned it just now, is having the money. We balance the budget using other than operational revenue that comes into town. And that equates to using free cash, ambulance receipts, and assessors overlay on it. And that's really money in the bank that we take out to do the day-to-day business of the town. And that's really, you know, if you simplify it at your home, if you're borrowing money from your savings every month to pay your light bill, gas bill, and everything that, you can see where that's going over the course of time. And that's what's really happening with us now, here in town. So, we'd be looking for this year, as we start planning, to do our best to live within our means, so we can put that money away towards our future for some of those big things that are really, be looking in us in the eye in the future. I mentioned BVT, that they're going to have an increase. I'm sure other schools are going to have an increase. We had some hiccups with Norfolk Aggie with an additional student. Glad representatives to see it tonight. To talk just a bit about the Norfolk Aggie. Not so much that whether a person has the right to go to that school, as they do. The problem is, is the tuition cost. It's an out-of-county tuition cost for us. The in-county tuition fee is about $8,500, if you lived in Norfolk County. But for us to send a student there, it's $21,000. That's a big discrepancy on it. So it's not about the fairness of sending that student, it's the fairness of the cost that we have to endure for them.
To me, it seems like out-of-district schools are trying to balance their budget with the out-of-district kids.
Well...
That's the way I see it looking at it.
Yeah, I mean, be frank about it, that's probably what they're doing. And it's a cash multiplier for them.
Cash cow.
So I'm not sure if there's anything the state can do to help us in that area. They do do a great job of it. The school is...
There's a Foundation Review Commission that's been working for about the past year and a half on looking at all of the school funding issues, this being one of them. And it's not just this town, you know, my hometown of Oxford, I think sends three kids to Norfolk Aggie, and an additional $21,000 a year, it's also the transportation.
Oh, absolutely, yep.
Which is another $20,000 a year. So it is very, you know, there's a huge cost component to that, but we're hopeful that the Foundation Review Commission will have some worthwhile recommendations. And that's not that far off, I think, within a couple months, we'll be seeing that.
Thank you, appreciate that. The Highway Department, we had a lot of discussions last year about that, and what direction it's going to, it's going to go, and the ability to plan and execute road repair projects and budget for them. I listened to the candidate who was here talking, that town accountant candidate, talk about ways on doing that. I saw some work this summer going on within the town, thrilled to see that. And we're still willing to work with the town, highway severe, to develop a long-range plan, so we'll be able to fund those road repairs using the Chapter 90 funds and getting reimbursed on a regular basis. so we'll be able to fund those road repairs using the chapter ninety funds and getting reimbursed on a regular basis without having to borrow to do that, short-term borrowing. You can do it, do cash flow or whatever, whatever the way we make it up. But make it efficient so we have a long-range approach to maintaining our roads in town on that. I think the last item on the areas of concern is how town management is going to be into the future. We've had a lot of discussions about the possible conversion from an executive secretary to a town manager, to that. And I think going into the next budget season, I'm hoping that that's going to get to a point where we kind of know where that's heading. So we can build a budget around that to support it. Whatever your decision is, as a board, to do that. We're looking forward to hearing more about that into the future as to how we're going to go about doing it and what we can do to help you get there as a finance committee on that. Some recommendations, I brought these up at the town meeting. But I think the foundation of our bedrock, I think, as a town, is to have a strategic plan. And we've been working that, because I believe that is what guides every other department to accomplishing their mission, is to have that strategic vision by your leadership to push the town forward. With that, you're able to develop a master, the planning board's able to develop a master plan for the town, get the zoning right, the highway department can develop a plan as so it focuses on roads that need to be repaired. But also, what's the word? Focus points or, like the downtown, we rezoned the downtown for business. How can the Highway Savvier develop a plan to improve the sidewalks, the roadways in that area of town to incorporate more desire to locate here, to locate businesses in our town? So I think it all stems back from a long-range strategic plan and everything boils around that. As the finance committee, we would develop a five-year plan to fund the goals, objectives and tasks in your plan. So, what are we budgeting for, for the year? What are we planning for? We plan a budget, not just to keep the lights on and everything else, but to plan our future. So I think if we work together as boards, we can accomplish that. And that's where we are, and I think that's where we'd like to see us head for that. So if there's any questions.
Good job. Great, great job.
Need anything from us besides just what we're currently doing?
If you know anybody who wants to serve on our board, we'd be, we'd love to have them on it. I know we have two vacancies, but if other people want to serve, we can develop subcommittees that would help us do other things on there too, with that. Also, on the capital is another area of importance, so with that.
Thank you.
All right, next we have our first public forum. And on the agenda for public forum, we have one agenda item. Phil Clark and the American Legion. And then after they're done, anyone else from the public is definitely welcome to speak, even if they're not on the agendas.
Good evening, Phil Clark, Commander of Millville Memorial Post 411, American Legion, 290 Main Street. My finance officer, Jeffrey Wing. Just wanted to go over, I know our workshop is canceled for October fifth, partly due to the building issues that we were having due to some leaks and also not hearing back from the town council on how to proceed. I contacted the executive secretary earlier on last week to find out where we were at. And it was a form that the Board of Assessors tried to have it added to, maybe you can help me out here, add it to a town warrant?
The selectman asked me to look into whether it would be possible to add a warrant article on the warrant for special town meeting and have the townspeople vote if they would be willing to waive the taxes due to the circumstances. Town council said, no, that was not possible. However, in her reply, she provided another suggestion that requires the Board of Assessors to do a little homework on, working with the DOR to see if they can waive the taxes a different way. So the Board of Assessors, at their next meeting, I think that was, I think that was next, last week, we're going to look into that and get back to me. Natalia was out ill today, so I couldn't touch base with her, but I know they are working on that.
Do you know anything more about that? Do you know exactly what that is?
It has to do with filing a chapter, chapter eight, section fifty-eight?
Yeah, we have that here. So, I've contacted, I'd like to say thank you for Senator, and also Horace Mall from Senator Fatman's office were attending. We requested them to be here to see if we could iron this out this time. But they did, Senator Fatman's office did notify us and gave us this schedule, it's called Schedule Fifty-Eight Eight. And it clearly states that you can do this.
It's a request for authority to pay the taxes.
As far as forgiving that tax lien or the tax on us, it's possible to do. And if they want to speak on it, I think they know a little bit more about it. But the information's here, we brought it with us, we wanted to bring it to the workshop, but it got canceled and that's why we wanted to be here today, because we've had this information for some time now. So, we're here with that and I'd like to turn that over. And if they're doing that, then fine. But that's why we wanted to know what this was all about.
Yeah, my understanding is, from my discussions with Natalia, that when they approached that earlier, they were told from the Department of Revenue that the reason why the taxes weren't paid did not qualify for pursuing this particular chapter. Town council seems to think the assessors could push the issue with the DOR, so that's what they're working to do. But they did already pursue this, they went down this once already and were denied from DOR. The specifics of that I don't have, I'm sure Natalia could speak to, you know, who she spoke with, et cetera. But, so this is a second round of attempting it through this means.
If I may add, just simply saying to you that, you know, Senator Fatman's office contacted you and they have a liaison from that office. And they are telling us through the Senator's office that it can be done.
But is Mr. Chairman, as I explained to Mr. Clark, as soon as we find out, we will certainly give him a call and invite them back in and...
Like I said before, we'd all love to just sign it away. But there's some legal steps, everything has to fall in place, so.
Evening, everybody. The reason I came this evening, first, you know, I was asked just to come to listen, but I wanted to just make you all aware, I mean, I think you're both in agreement, you know, the town and the organization, that we'd like to get this done, but it's just a matter of legality and how to cross the Ts and dot the Is to make that happen. Just wanted to make sure you all are aware that if at some point either town council or the DOR says that you'll need special legislation in order to effectuate this, I'll be delighted to file that on behalf of the town and the organization as well. So, sometimes, especially when you're dealing with things that might be prior year, and I think there is a timing issue involved in this whole situation here. It may require special legislation to resolve. So if indeed that is the case, just reach out to our office, give us all the details and we'll jointly file that with the Senator's office. Okay, so, just wanted to come and offer my support. You know, I think you're both pulling on the same side of the rope here and want this to happen, but need to make sure that we do it legally so that, you know, the books close and everything is handled appropriately. So, my office and the Senator's office, you know, we're here to help, you know, try to resolve this on behalf of everybody.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
So I think the main point of tonight's appearance was just to touch base, see how our October fifth workshop was canceled and to find out exactly where we were at and make sure that, and we just found out, we're working on the same piece of...
We didn't want to work on the same, you know, we didn't have opposing things we were doing. So, that's nice to know that they were looking into the same thing we were told, so. That's pretty much it, so thank you very much.
All right, great, thank you. Rich?
Just quickly for the record, as an appointed town official, but also more importantly, as a Army veteran, veteran of Operation Enduring Freedom and a Legion member, I'd like to lend my support to getting this resolved and finding our appropriate remedy for this.
So, I mean, thank everybody for your service that you've given the country. Without that, we wouldn't be here today, so, thank you. Next correspondence, we have a thank you letter from Housing Works. They're just thanking us for allowing them to, on their bike run, to pass through the town and to let us know that they, that whole project, they ended up raising two hundred and seventy thousand dollars, which goes to the aid homeless crisis that we have and the AIDS crisis. So, just a letter of thank you from the Global Impact Productions, so. Next, we have appointments, resignations, none scheduled for tonight. And executive secretary report, Helen?
Mr. Chairman, the first thing I just wanted to mention, the council on aging, when presenting, mentioned they had submitted a name for appointment. That did come in after the agenda was closed, that will be on the next meeting. Just wanted to let you know that. Just to let you know, the elevator had broken a couple of weeks ago. Unfortunately, one of our highly esteemed town officials, Margaret Carroll, was stuck in that elevator.
Well, it's not funny.
It's not funny.
All the people that hit stop.
So the repairmen did come out, made an attempt to repair it. Unfortunately, it still was not working. Today, finally, at long last, they did come in and hopefully fix the issues completely. So, that now is up and running again. At the last meeting, the board asked that I invite Colonial Power in. And this was a recommendation through the Hampshire Council of Governments in connection with the electricity aggregation. We did reach a representative and they are willing to come in and present to the board at no charge on November second, which is your next meeting, at seven o'clock. They are sending two representatives. The American Legion, we're working on that. I do want to mention with the American Legion, the eight of fifty-eights, the section eight of chapter fifty-eight, that does require a great deal of paperwork and research by the assessors' office, so I just ask for your patience as Natalia gets that done. It's not a full-time job and she does have sick time and personal time, so oftentimes, she's not in the office. And when she isn't, she does have other things she does need to deal with. So, we do understand it as a priority, but I just ask for your patience in letting us get that done. One thing I wanted to point out to the board, and I'm glad Chief Landry's here this evening. The board at the last meeting had asked that town council draft a letter to the town of Blackstone seeking some clarification on their mutual aid policy. In your packets, I copied you on an email from town council that the situation seems to have disappeared and the letter was not going to be sent out. I then was informed today that the letter did go out after all. So you don't have that in your packet. Late this afternoon, I was told there was a change of circumstance and the letter did in fact go out. So the letter that you have attached, I'm assuming, is the one that did in fact go out.
So the change of circumstance, does that mean that they're still going to stand by their...
That's why I was hoping the chief could maybe comment on that, I'm not sure the exact reason.
Last week, Chief Horn, Chief Asper penis and myself met. From what I understood, we worked everything out and we left the meeting. Two days after, there was an article, you know, it was a call, which was filled with incorrect information. So, I'm not meeting with Chief Asper penis until we receive the response from the attorney, because it doesn't seem to be an end to the situation. What I read was certainly incorrect, from what actually occurred and what's been occurring. So, have we worked it all out? I think we have. I think they're going to back us up when we need it and they're available. But I'd rather see it in writing, because to be frank, I don't know. They've changed once, they've printed erroneous information. So, I'm trying to be polite the best way I can, so I'd rather see it in writing to know where we stand. And if we do call, we get a response. So, prior to the news article, I would have thought everything was worked out.
Was the news article exclusively about the issue?
It was.
Or was it like embedded in?
It was a two-page article where they interviewed Blackstone officials in person. They'd never had the courtesy to reach out to me or call me or speak to me, I've never spoken to the press. But they took the turn to call the press. It was, I think it was in last Thursday's, when Saki calls, quite lengthy, where they spent time with their police chief, their town administrator.
But it was only on this topic, or was it...
It was only on this topic.
So we're saying, we're just saying, this is a one-sided conversation?
So, it was, we didn't have the input that I thought we could have added, we went off of that input. So, as it stands right now, like I said, prior to the article in the newspaper, we had a very productive meeting. I thought we worked out the issues. But then, when I read the article in the paper, it's certainly not very supportive of the town of Millville. So I take an issue to it, I take an issue to the honesty of the report, so I'll leave it at that. So that's why, when I spoke at the town council, she had sent me a draft. And I said, it looks like we worked it out. But then, following day, the day after that, I read the article in the newspaper. So I replied back to Margaret saying, well, I'm not sure if we worked it out, so can you send it? So I was going to explain it to you tonight. So, I'm just looking for an answer because I'm surprised no one read the article, it was quite large. It was half the front page and part of another page. And like I said, I won't repeat myself, but I will one time, full of this information that wasn't correct.
Helen, we get the paper here.
We don't get the call anymore.
Oh, they don't?
Because we're never in it, we're never in it.
Well, we're only in it when somebody wants to...
Usually they drop it off for free, don't they usually?
No, we get the Milford Daily News and we get the Telegram and Gazette.
Chief Horn was involved in the conversations. Chief Horn is aware of the truth and what's actually been occurring. But Chief Horn is going to really stay out of it, because it's an issue between...
I'm just saying, you had a conversation with three people.
We did, but, you know, Chief Horn's going to stay neutral. It's an issue between Blackstone and Millville, so...
What are you saying, they're going to back men or not?
No, they're not, he's certainly not backing anyone up. He just doesn't want to get involved in a catfight. But I'll just say one thing, I'll repeat myself from the previous meeting. We didn't do anything, we didn't ask for anything, we still provide as much service as we possibly can to any community. All this minutia was brought upon by the town of Blackstone, period. In regards of their replies, I know the truth and we know the truth. And the tapes, not a single tape, there's multiple tapes, defend our position, what's been occurring. So they can spin it any way they want to, which they're going to do.
They're good at that.
It's just like if you place a rat in the box, the rat's going to get out. Sooner or later, it's going to figure it out. So I'll be nice and look at my comments to that.
Well, I think too, in light of that, the police union came and, you know, Mr. Sullivan took time out of his day to come here, explain that whole situation. And I think for the union's sake and our officers' sake, is having, even if it was solved within the meeting, the initial meeting, I still would have felt more comfortable with something in writing.
No, I agree.
Just, that's me.
And I'll say this, the officers of the Blackstone Police Department are very professional and there's no issue with them. This is purely an administration issue between towns. And I have no idea why it's sad, why it's continuing. But read the article yourself and you can draw your own conclusions. So, like I said, we didn't go to the media, I never spoke to the media. That was the word I gave Chief Horn. We all gave Chief Horn the same message, the same word. And suddenly, two days later, they did what they did.
Thanks, chief.
Anything else?
Well, it's good that no one reads that paper anymore.
It does not surprise me.
And they don't run them online, so.
Yeah, but it takes a lot for me not to say more than what I'm going to say.
Me too, I'm biting my tongue. I'm biting my tongue right now. All right, thank you, Chief.
Just to the chief's, the chief made a, the statement, perhaps it has to do with the administration. I just wanna let the board know, I've had no discussions or any information.
Oh, no, we know that.
We know that.
Nothing.
We know that.
I just wanna get that out there for people watching, saying, oh, it's administration, what's...
Yeah, our administration hasn't had any discussions with theirs at all. It just came.
It's all one-sided.
Okay. At the last meeting, just prior to the last meeting, Selectman Reposa and Chairman Barrett and I attended at the Town Hall in Uxbridge. Yes, I was gonna call it a seminar, but, you know, an event introducing the local towns to this new community compact agreement that the governor and his staff have introduced. And the board expressed strong interest in proceeding with one of these items. And the board voted to look into something that would assist us with this building, whether it's a consultant or engineering or something that would either help us build new or deal with this building, but that would assist with the continuity of the government operations. I sent an email to Sean Cronin, ran some ideas by him. As I suspected, none of the, none of the things we discussed having to do with this building were gonna qualify under the agreement. However, if you recall, when the auditor was here, he asked that we put at the forefront a COOP, a continuity of operations plan, which is something that is mandated by FEMA. We don't have one of those yet. So, I did ask Sean if that's something that he thought would work. He said that they would support that. One of, you know, one of the caveats is that we continue with that. If any changes occur over the years, that our best practice be that we maintain that plan going forward. So, we will need to have some buy-in from our emergency management departments and public safety officials. And also, the dollar amount, he said it's gotta stay within the range of twenty-five to thirty-five thousand. So, I was working today trying to get some numbers to see what the cost of that would be. But if I do get some answers, that we can get a consultant or we can get this work done within that range, is this something that the board wants to go with? Because if I do get an answer, I'd rather not have to wait two more weeks. I'd rather just input the, the application and...
It's just frustrating because what we need is not what they want to give us. And granted, yes, you should have this, but I cannot imagine twenty-five to thirty-five thousand dollars going into that plan. I feel like...
And it may not cost that much.
It may be less. I would hope so for, you know, for a town this size and the departments and the things of that sort. Yes, we need one of those. I would have always just assumed that there's a flow chart already in place through FEMA and what the direction of with the police and the fire and all of that. I, it's just really frustrating 'cause, you know, to have twenty thousand to thirty-five thousand dollars to use for something practical that would help us in our budget. It seems like what they want us to do is something that is not going to be a cost savings to us. Granted, it will be an enhancement to the community and the town and the process, but it's not a cost saving. It's not helping us financially in that sense, budget-wise and project-wise. So, it's, I...
Well, the board certainly has the alternative of going back and reviewing the list of best practices and coming up with another option. This actually isn't one that was listed. I wasn't sure it was gonna be supported at all, but it seems to be he, you know, he is willing to work with us on this. But this isn't listed as a best practice at all on their website, so.
Take another pass at it. Do a little bit, bit more. I'll do some more.
Okay.
At this time, I couldn't entertain that. I, I need to ask certain people certain questions and start doing before I'm gonna throw thirty, thirty-five thousand dollars in the, in the air. That's how I'm looking at it. I mean, I gotta find out what the, what we get out of the bang for the buck. I mean, what this is all about. I, I got too many questions, so, as far as I'm concerned, I might as well just table it. That's my opinion from that. I have no comment at this time.
I mean, our Fang Comm talked earlier about the strategic plan and master plans and those kinda things. I mean, that's a whole comprehensive government thing. I mean, if the, you know, contin- continue, the, the government, the, what was the word?
The continuity of...
Continuity, thank you. I had a loss, continuity of government. You know, could we, could it play off into what the finance committee is looking for, which enhances the whole town too? You know, there's a few plans that we could probably look at rather than just that. But I just, like you said, it's, it's up to thirty-five thousand dollars and it's... It seems like, it seems like it's a, you know, a want rather than a need is what they're looking for.
No, it is a federal mandate. The representative, correct me if I'm wrong.
It is, of course.
Yeah, and, and we don't have one. And if, and if we don't get it this way, this board really needs to determine how we're going to have one. Because if I get a call tomorrow saying the Town Hall has collapsed, you can't work there, I don't know what you want me to do. I have no idea where my staff is going. I have no idea where we're going to conduct the business of the town. So, it is a serious issue and I understand you, you know, you don't wanna throw thirty thousand dollars away on it, but it is something we do need to get one way or another.
Chairman, yes, sir.
The state, the state is notorious for throwing stuff out there on the expense of the town. And a lot of times, they throw mandates out there with no money funded. And I think a lot of people, and even on this board, are getting tired of it.
Yeah, I wanted to address two items on this. First, the Community Compact Program was designed to foster towns that take on best practices in a bunch of different areas. It's funded by a grant from the state. So, so there's not a town component, it's not thirty-five thousand of the town's money. It would, it would come through the grant program. So, from the perspective of the, if the co-op, you know, document is a federal mandate, you've gotta do one at some point, this would be cost savings to the town if, if the, this program's gonna pay for it as opposed to the town having to pay for it from some other perspective. But long-term, the governor and the lieutenant governor want to position the Community Compact Program as essentially a declaration of partnership between communities and their administration. And by participating in the Community Compact Program, for any future mass works grants that you apply for, you get essentially bonus points in the evaluation criteria for future mass works grants, water, sewer, whatever it may be, that would make you more likely to win those grants because it's essentially, it's an attaboy, you know, a couple attaboy points for stepping up and working with the administration on the Community Compact Program. So, I, I don't know if this is the right one for you guys to pick, but I would strongly encourage you guys to find something that makes sense for the town and meets the criteria of the program because it, it won't cost you anything.
Well, that's what I'm hearing now, but that's not what I heard out of her. Now, all of a sudden, you're saying, well, it's federal, it's federal back. We got, you know, we got grant money. I don't hear that come out of Helen. That's not what she said. She's saying it comes out of our pocket.
No, I never said it came out of our pocket.
I, I think it's a manifestation, yeah.
Where is the grant money?
I would have to apply for it.
Apply, if we get it, then...
I mean, if we don't get it, then what?
We don't get it.
Then, then you do a different project. No, I mean, if you...
For a different project.
Right. And, and this is not a competitive grant from the perspective of, there's, there's a pool of X dollars and a hundred towns are all gonna apply for this X dollars. Whoever puts the best proposal forward is gonna win that money. What this is, is it's, it's a partnership. And you're gonna negotiate back and forth, as Helen's already started doing, with, with the, the compact program manager. And once you identify a, a project that meets the town's needs and meets the qualifying aspects of the program, that grant, it's a handshake and that grant's awarded. So, it's not like this, a compet- what you're typically used to on a competitive grant program, okay? But again, the important thing is also downstream, it does set you up for a more favorable review for any mass works grants that, you know, that you may go after at some point, so. And again, I, I don't know if this is the right one for you guys to do or not. It could help you avoid expending money on, on, on a federal requirement. But even if it's not the right one, you know, and if you wanna work with our office or we can act as liaisons with the governor's office, we're happy to do that as well to, to help. But it sounds like you've already got the right contact there, Helen, so.
Yes, yep.
But yeah, I strongly encourage you to find something to work with them on because it's downstream, it'll, it'll pay off in spades for you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you. Not even a grant. It's just a small application. Rich, you want to say something? Rich?
I'll just quickly add my two cents. I'm the COOP planner for where I work. And basically, what you're doing, you're planning for a catastrophe. Most likely, in our case, a weather catastrophe. Where I work could possibly be any, you know, terrorist attack or something like that. But basically, what you're doing is you have a plan in place that's gonna allow you to lift and shift government operations if this building becomes unoccupiable for some reason. So, what it involves in is every department in the town sits down with the COOP planner and develops their critical tasks that they need to accomplish to keep town government going in the event the, the river out here rises up and it, and it engulfs this building. Not inconceivable after what we just saw in South Carolina out there. So, it involves your critical tasks and how you're gonna accomplish those tasks someplace else. So, you have to identify where that someplace else is gonna be. Have your tasks and the key personnel that you're gonna need to do it with. So, that next place where you're going to set up, be it at the Millville Elementary School or someplace else, has gotta have connectivity to tie your computers into. Another thing is we've got our servers where all of our information is on, right here. It's backed up. But if this building becomes engulfed, those servers are probably not there anymore. So, part of the COOP plan is gonna identify how are you gonna get beyond that, that piece? How are you gonna mitigate if that happens? The cost that has been thrown out there is not inconceivable because of the work that's gotta be done. Do we need a plan that big? Is our town that big? Do we need something that big? Maybe not. You've got the Town Hall, you've got the police department, uh, key items, the fire department that you'd wanna do. But it is a, it is a needed plan. You know, if there's grant money out there, that, that'd be the way to go, to do it first. Because disaster's only...
So, basically, what you're saying, Rich, so I understand this, is you're gonna take a department, say you're in a disaster and this and that, move your department to another place and run their department with all of the needs that they have.
Right. They identify ahead of time what those are gonna be. And either through, if they have laptops, which everybody's recommending now that instead of the pizza boxes, they use laptops, so you take them with them quite readily. Plug them in at the new location and start to be up and running and keep the town business going. That's, that's it in a nutshell.
It's almost like the, you know, the, the science and math deal at the school, where Valley Tech went way ahead of time, got all his grant money and basically did it no cost to the district. And at some point, the federal government's gonna tell us, all right, go do it. And if there's not a grant available for us...
Well, and that's another thing. If there's a computer lab in a school that's available, you could conceivably set up in that computer lab and run the town government from that computer lab if you can get on, if you have the right accesses to the right programs and everything else that we run. So, there's ways to do this and there's ways to do it economically without building, you don't have to build a duplicate Town Hall or duplicate emergency operations center to do this. Have to think, think it through and...
Identify a new location and...
Yep. And identify what your critical tasks are and identify those people who are gonna perform those tasks and identify the process that's gonna say, this is how we make the decision to move from here to the new location. You know, and there's usually a crisis management team made up of your board, probably the key operators, the highway, fire and police department on there. You know, any other key directors that you need to do your department, so. That's what it is. It's, it's, it's an important plan, but doing it through a grant, working through the state without having to outlay that amount of money. And there's a whole bunch of people out there that would help you spend that amount of money. And just finding the one that's gonna do it at a price that we can, we can either afford through a grant or afford through our own.
We should probably rethink that. It's probably not, it's probably a good item to...
And your emergency management team should be...
I mean, we have so many things that... But this is one that the federal government's gonna mandate at some point. But we can do it for free right now. Thank you, Rich.
I think the board also...
Thanks for your two cents.
Chairman, I think the board also should be cognizant of the fact that when our auditors did present the audit report, there were really only two financial issues that he raised. One was that there were some smaller departments that needed numbered official receipt books, which has been implemented. We ordered those, we got them in. And the other was that we need a COOP plan. There were no other concerns or issues in town, to my recollection. So, you know, if you're discussing best practices and your auditor is telling you that this is something you need, to me, that would just be the way to go. Unless you can go back to the website, if Mr. Reposa wants to go back and do another review of the list and come up with another idea, we can look into that. It's up to you.
I'll make the motion if we pursue a COOP plan.
I'll second that. Any more discussion on that COOP?
Mr. Laura, are you familiar with, with what we're talking about, the, the compact agreement and, okay?
It's, it's similar to a grant, but you don't have to go through all the loopholes to get it.
Well, we have, we have discussed it at previous meetings. I'm not, maybe you were absent.
So, anyway. All right, so is this...
Take a vote?
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I just, I just think it's something that our town isn't that big, that we have very intelligent people with our own community and for our size and our... I don't, I don't think we had to go the grant route on this, but that's fine.
Did you get one?
That's gotta go in anyone, I don't want it.
I probably have the one with...
Ross, he probably has yours.
I'll write that.
It's just, it's just a monthly. All right. Anything else, Helen, on your report?
Um, yes. I had a meeting last week with our National Grid representative, Bob Russell. Very informative meeting. And he wanted to let the board and the town's people know that they should expect their electricity delivery rates to be going up November first.
Done.
No, the rates are going up, but your bill, but your bill may be, they're restructuring it.
So, this, this paper is also on the homepage of the town's website. This explains your energy bill. He recommended that residents become familiar with their bill. So, anybody at home, this is on the town, the town website homepage, if you wanted to look into that. But again, the, the rates will be going up for delivery services, which is the, the actual electricity starting November first.
Is this increase within the allowable long-term increases? It's not like last year's?
That's probably a question of the representative.
Rep. Carroll, so you have any...
National Grid gets the electricity from...
I know that they can gouge us like they did last year unfairly for six months. I know that they can gouge us like they did last year unfairly for six months and get away with it. Anything more than that has to go through legislation.
They have to justify all the costs to the utility mission, which goes on and improves the rates. So, it's fairly well betted. The shortcoming in the process is I don't believe they typically allow public input at the rate appearance. So, it's the regulatory board and the utility company without you and I having the opportunity to speak.
Well, that sounds fair.
Yeah.
I think most of us have already seen increases in the amount of about 25% for the same usage over a period of a year.
Yep. Okay. Thank you, Helen.
The article was in the Telegraph today about the rate increase going up, but it's still less than what it was last year.
Yeah, it was up to 16, I think, per kilowatt hour, and we're at nine now, and I think it's going to go to about 13. Now, the town, town buildings, we are with Constellation, we're at 10. So, we're doing, we're doing pretty good. I believe it was Selectman Laura or Selectman Wing who had asked me to find out the specific laws and/or town bylaws or regulations that are being violated with respect to the home on Hill Street.
Yep.
And I did get that for you.
That's, uh...
Right now, the building department does not have a ticketing book, so they're in the process of ordering that. So there was, there was no means for them to issue tickets, other than by letter. But they are ordering the book, they will start issuing those tickets with respect to the, with respect to the issue on Old Chestnut Hill Road with the vehicles, unregistered motor vehicles on the property. Chief Landry has been working on that.
Looks like you brought a couple more in.
The bylaws are different. It's, it's an unregistered vehicle violation, which in our bylaws is enforced by the police department, not the zoning officer. So that particular situation is a little different from the other situations we're dealing with.
I'm pretty sure he has tickets.
Helen, yeah, one thing regarding Mark Turridge, I did meet with Mr. Fernandez on Friday of last week.
Okay.
And what he said was he's going to reappear before the board of selecting with his attorney. He's under the understanding that he thought he had a two-year window to appeal the decision that was made. So he will be coming back with his attorney. But I did tell him as of Monday coming, I'll be starting issuing violations every day until he either resolves the situation through court or he removes all the costs. He was aware that as of Monday, he gets his first violation and every day thereafter. But he did say he'd be here.
Where's he come up with that?
I, I had a brief conversation with that topic and he said, his attorney had told him he had two years to appeal. You know, unfortunately, he had some issues within his family life the last couple of months, so he hasn't been there too often. Took me a while to find him, so I went to his house and I tracked him down. So he did say he'll appear before the water selectmen once again with his attorney, but as of Monday, he starts issuing violations.
Okay.
So it's one a day until he gets them cleared up. So I would expect, I thought he would be here tonight, but obviously, he's not.
Have our attorney be notified?
I believe Barbara San Andre is aware of the situation, so...
I think she just needs to give guidance in what we need to do for that meeting.
Yep, if the chief has any questions, he can certainly call her.
I think my position is pretty clear. We're on the bylaw, just going to issue a violation every day. And if he doesn't appear, I'll bring it to the district court and we'll put it there. So, my job is fairly easy. But if he comes back and tells the board of selecting, he has that idea, he has his two-year window for an appeal. I have no idea what that means.
Well, that's why I said maybe you ought to...
Yeah, that's why I thought he was going to be here tonight.
Well, if he comes during public welfare, there's nothing we can do anyways, except for listen, thank him and bring it up at the next meeting. But if he gets on the agenda, then we definitely will need some more information so that Helen can have our attorneys advise us what we need to do during that meeting so that it's all...
Maybe I did have our attorney here.
I did tell him that you reach out to Helen if you had any questions to do that and schedule a meeting with the water selectmen. So he said he would, that's why I'm surprised he's not here tonight. But he does have 18 cars, one motorcycle, three trailers and a small camper.
And you're allowed one.
You're allowed one, right. But I'm not giving a ticket per vehicle, I'm just giving one ticket per day.
Right.
Doesn't make sense to give 18, 19 tickets per day. I'll just give it one per day, which adds up anyway.
Is that one ticket for the whole lot?
Yeah. I mean, don't get me wrong, if the board has designed a, a usual of 18 tickets per day, theoretically, we can. But I don't know if that's going to, I think one of these is going to serve the purpose just as well as...
What does the bylaw read?
I think it's per vehicle. It's per vehicle.
Well...
I think if we're going to use our bylaws to say this...
You have to go by the bylaw, Ron. I think that's the way we should do it.
No, I don't have a problem with it.
I think that's what Jennifer's getting, that's...
Yeah, if we're going to fall back at, these are our bylaws and these are the rules we're following, we, we have to, I know it's nice...
No, I get it.
Well, we have to be fair across the board. I think, you know, I mean, it's...
I'll need a lot of ticket books soon because...
Well, I mean, a fine like that daily would definitely...
18 minus one, so it's 17 per day.
That would speed me up to clean up.
I think it can be one ticket if you just multiply the amount...
Yeah, I guess I can, yeah.
But my, Mr. Chairman, my recommendation would be that the chief speak with our town council before proceeding, just to make sure.
Yeah, I...
Just in case she interprets the bylaw a little differently than we do.
Right. Yeah, make sure that she agrees that we're reading it right before, what we should. If it says X, Y, Z, that's what we should do.
Yeah, like I said, he told me on the advice of his attorney, he had, he thought he had two years to appeal it, and that's why he hasn't done anything. So it's out of my...
Yeah.
Yeah, that could very well be the case.
No, I never heard that.
I didn't debate it with him, he just said he had two years to appeal.
That's fine.
So I said, that's great, but as of Monday, he's not getting violations. So I gave him a week to remove any cars that he has.
Yeah, that's what I would do. Call attorney, she says, yeah, you got to write the ticket. Like Helen says, write one ticket for how many vehicles at a time, if by whatever, and that's what it is.
For $750 a day, something like that.
Yeah, I mean, if you, if you do speak with her, you may just run that by her if a denied class two license has a two-year appeal period.
Okay. And if, and if he does have an appeal process of two years...
Can't we still ticket? That's a question for her.
All right, I'll call it tomorrow. Thank you.
Thanks.
Well, I think, Rich.
In terms of fairness, if you're tagging this one individual, you're going to go put tickets on the sky, when did, you have to do that, you go all over town and identify the ones that have more than one hundred inches of car?
Which, which, which the building inspector or the zoning enforcement officer asked us if, if, how he would like, how we would like him to proceed with zoning bylaw offenses. And he says, if I see him from the street or somebody complains, what do I do? And we informed him, no matter where you are, if there's a violation, to enforce it, to be corrected.
Do you think what I do is when I drive around, it was a genuine, Chestnut Hill Road, you have like four, and not only do it two weeks ago, we're all going today. So I see it when I, I speak to the people, genuinely care them out. So as of today, I think there's only two addresses in town that have more than one registered, but you really can't see them, but I do see them, so I'll be speaking to them as well. Because that falls as, like Helen said, my...
Right, we do have a template letter that we send out, which gives them 30 days to move it. After that 30 days, the chief can start ticketing.
So they usually do, but not when they do it, usually they don't see any of them.
So, so we're not singling out one particular... No, we're not, nope.
That's why I need Mr. Fernandez an additional week, even though he's had two months.
Yeah. Okay.
Speaking of licensing, just to let the board know, the ABCC licenses went out today. The deadline for the applicants to return those will be November 23rd, and the board will be considering those at the first meeting in December.
Okay.
As you know, the town has, or the state has some ethics mandates that town officials and board and committee members need to complete, signing a receipt form once per year and then taking some online training every other year. We've been reviewing this and maintaining spreadsheets, and we have quite a few town officials, board committee members, who still have yet to be in compliance with this mandate. We've sent out reminder letters, we send out emails, we make phone calls, and the process is still continuing, and we've come a long way. My question was, gee, what, what are we supposed to do with people who just never comply with the mandate? So we started asking around what some of the other towns do.
Yeah.
And for the most part, what we were told was, it's a law. And if they're not complying, if you're informing them and you're reminding them and they're still not compliant, you know, it's really up to the board, but perhaps if they're appointed, they should be, their seats should be vacated because they're not in compliance with the law. The other train of thought is, you know what, it's an ethics issue. As long as the town is telling them and they're informed, it's their choice not to be in compliance, and if there is a problem, it's going to be on them personally, not the town. So there are two trains of thought. I'm still working on this, but I wanted to bring this to the board's attention tonight because I'd like you to start thinking about how you want to deal with these employees. Because in a couple of weeks, if we still...
Are some of them employees?
Well, every town official, board committee member, even volunteer, is an employee of the town.
Right, but like, are these like payroll people? I'm not talking about the volunteers.
No, for the most part, they're board and committee members. And there are some positions that are exempt from taking the training, but everybody is required to sign a receipt. For the most part, it's on a yellow sheet of paper. We send those out every December. Now, here we are in October, and I'm still working on getting last December's receipts. You know, the training, a lot of positions are exempt from the training, fortunately, but we still have probably a dozen people who have yet to take that training. And again, that is only once every two years. But it is a state mandate, so we'll keep plugging away at this, but if the board wants to start putting some thought into...
December 1st, is that the meeting? Or is it December 7th?
It's the 7th.
So if we sent out an email or a letter now to the individuals that haven't done the ethics thing and let them know that they have now till the, whatever that first Monday in December is, because at that meeting on the agenda will be to vacate those seats.
Maybe you could also...
I mean, the ones that aren't getting paid might say, thank you. I hope not, you know.
But sometimes, just coming from the boards, you know, letting the chairs of the boards know who on their board isn't, that might go, I, I know mine is up because I do mine for work and here at the same time, I just plug in the two job descriptions, so I know mine is up. So I think coming from your board, like, listen, we don't want to lose you, can you just go online and do it, might go a little bit further than just the letter or the email reminding them.
I mean, it, it's not something you can flunk.
No, you take it till you pass it.
Yeah. It's, it's really to just give you common knowledge of what to do and what not to do. So. It takes probably 20 minutes.
It's about half hour.
Say half an hour.
But we will have another, another mailing going out in December, again, asking everybody for another signed receipt. And then there'll be those individuals who are due for another year of training, you know, we'll get that letter as well, so.
All right.
Just wondering if, like, town meeting, before town meeting, you know, we could get used to the computer lab at the school and just say it's open for everybody's use if they wanted to use it, but most people have computers at home, but, I mean, if it's that they can't get online, especially with maybe some of our, you know, older individuals who serve and, you know, maybe we can...
The library and the senior center both have computers available.
Do they?
Yeah.
I think that's the issue. I'm not quite sure what is, but I don't think it's a...
I mean, get a bag of popcorn, a coffee, a soda and sit down and do it. That's it. It's that easy.
I think it's just the time and then you forget about it.
Yeah.
Do you remember some of those things?
All right. Thank you very much.
The other, the other thing that we're always watching, this is another state and federal mandate, is the NIMS training. I know which is something near and dear to Chief Landry's heart. We still have a few individuals who are not compliant with that. I'm not even sure if what we were told years ago was that if you weren't in compliance with the NIMS training, you would not be able to get any grants, federal grants. So I'm not sure if that's still the case, but usually the emergency management department, you know, maintains this. I've just always done it here in town, but we still have some people who aren't compliant, and I'm not sure if that's something the board wants to pursue, how you want to deal with that, if they're elected officials, if they're appointed officials.
Well, kind of the same situation, right?
Send them a letter.
Yeah.
Send them a letter.
Yeah, and this, what we've done in the past with this is we give each department head a copy of their employees.
Yep.
It's highlighted in yellow who has not done what they need to do, and we let the department heads deal with it, but...
Well, I want to send another day through by December 7th.
Yep.
Like Ron said, go from there.
So I just want confirmation that that's the board's policy, that they do want, they do expect and want town officials to continue.
When we do one, we might as well keep it even, so all of them too, December 7th.
Yeah, you, you relax on it, and then it's just going to get worse.
Fair.
Well, Helen, it's just funny, every federal grant I've applied for, and quite a few of them, they never ask.
They never ask.
They don't ask. There's nothing on the application, there's no way they will send the information. Not to say that they don't, I'm saying everything we've applied for, I've never seen it.
That's the first I've heard that it's connected to grant money.
Yeah, now, that's what we've always been told, and in every memo that goes out, we explain that. Not our rule, it's, it was a federal, federal law. All right, so that is ongoing.
Well, in the event the federal government remembers that they're supposed to be checking, will be covered.
The last thing I just wanted to mention to the board, I bumped into somebody who I don't usually see over the weekend, and they, they said to me, oh, I heard you changed jobs. And I said, I did. No, I haven't changed jobs.
Did you?
They said, oh, we, we heard that you're not doing your job anymore, that you're just a little secretary and you sit out in the office. No, that's not the case, you were misinformed. So just for anybody who does see me sitting at the desk, I just want to clarify, I am still doing the job. I was hired and contracted to do, what I have done is taken on additional responsibilities of the secretarial position so the board can save money this year to help fund whatever your plan is for the future. So I sit out there in the business office until the doors are closed, and then I go in my office and do the work that I...
No, you told me that. Month ago.
So I just want everybody to know that I haven't just taken it upon myself to only do clerical work. I'm still doing the job I was hired and I'm contracted to do until June 30th. And that's, that's it for my report.
Thank you, Helen. We always enjoy those long ones.
Yes.
Next, a special town meeting warrant we need to sign.
Yep, changes were made from the board's meeting where you voted on them. I've got two originals that will require the board's signature. I believe you all had copies to review in your, in your packet. I believe you all had copies to review in your, in your packets. And I also gave you a copy of what the available funding sources will look like at the start of the meeting and if all the recommendations are voted on as finance committee suggested, what the balances will look like at the end of the meeting.
Excuse me.
Mm-hmm.
So I would make the motion to.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Town hall parking lot, new business. For town business only. So there's a lot of parking going on there outside of town business, chief?
The very last house had an abundance of cars since they moved in. I did speak to them last week and then they didn't remove three of the cars that were parked in the lot. And the remaining cars are now parked on their property.
Okay.
So prior to that conversation, they had like six vehicles taking parking spots. So they're very accommodating, I spoke to them, and they moved all cars. So, but it wouldn't be a bad idea to post a town hall business.
Yep.
Because it is our lot and you have residential homes that if they're not aware of it, you know, they leave, well, they had a couple of cars from our state plates parked there. And they just, they weren't aware of it until I spoke to them.
Yeah.
If you lose six spots, it's a lot of spots.
Could we word the sign to exempt, like Sundays or something? Just, that's when people have companies.
If you drive by the town hall on the weekends that night, there's people who park on the side of the building that live next door. On the day of your weekend, they're not there during Business Day. So you could. And if you're on Business Halls only.
Business Halls only is tough because if you have a meeting, or you have multiple meetings going on.
Right, right.
You know, those fluctuate, so, or if there's a hearing, you know.
Seven AM Monday till midnight Friday, till seven PM Friday.
They're very accommodating, they took care of it right away. My only concern is if you allow them to park their containers there. And then you try to have them do, and they're gonna say, what's up, I've been parking there for two years and you haven't said anything. So, if it worked out, if it's the case, if you really wanna have some signage identifying that it's town property.
Well, maybe seven AM to nine PM.
Soon to the library.
Monday through Friday.
Soon to the library, the problem we have here too.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, the only thing I question is how will that work with the playground?
While town hall and playground.
Well, I think municipal parking, so that would cover your municipal playground.
Or, yeah. Municipal business or municipal property use only.
Yeah, my only concern is somebody leaves a car there.
Yeah.
And it's not, and it doesn't run, it's not posted anywhere. My ability to tow it is somewhat limited because there's no signage.
Yep.
It doesn't say we can tow.
Yeah, posted. How should we word it? I mean, should we kinda try to exempt the weekend?
I'm just afraid if something says for municipal use only. As a mom, if I was bringing my child to the playground, I might think twice and say, ooh, I'm not supposed to park here.
You could just identify that as a municipal lot. So they know it's not their private lot. I mean, that house, the very last house, they haven't parked, they have no way to park around that direct. Would you leave the outside with the beginning of maybe?
And what's the enforcement if somebody is parking in it that shouldn't be?
Well, we can tell them, as long as it's posted.
Does that, that has to be posted?
Yeah.
Okay.
What about parking that for private use?
Yeah.
Well, seven AM to ten, no park, you know, parking for town property? What town, I'm trying to think. You know, even if you just did like seven to ten, it covers you for the meetings, it covers you for the morning. But if someone's sleeping overnight, it's not gonna be a huge issue because they'll be out by seven in the morning, you know. I just don't know.
I wish, I wish we had enough room to allow people to.
Yeah, I think you just wanna remind people it's town property.
Well, it's town, the library sign, I think they say overnight parking only.
Oh, that needs to change, yeah, I think so.
Yeah, and then I think it's, you know, business library patrons, but, you know, I don't know what the.
Something like that. We don't wanna sound like we're communists.
No, very much. You drive through other cities in town, they just have a municipal lot parking. They don't really, there's a restriction on it, but these people know it's municipal lot parking. You can't bring your car, they start taking off the wheel and changing brakes. And theoretically, you could do that now if you wanted to.
Municipal parking lot. All others will be towed, I think, they know it's a town playground, I think, you know.
Yeah, that's all.
Municipal parking lot, all others, all violators will be towed.
Yeah.
Violators will be, or maybe?
Violators may be towed, I don't know what the sense, whatever the word is.
Maybe tow, yeah.
Maybe tow.
Sounds a little more gentle.
And we took it in chat before we towed anywhere, we knocked on the doors. And sometimes we had Rhode, Rhode Island plates and I think North Carolina plates, sort of kind of.
Maybe they, they weren't tall?
They were staying in that last house, so.
Suggestion on where that should be installed?
Probably pole, where the poles would.
Beginning of the, of the building?
Yeah, maybe.
Right in the island or something.
I mean, as pulled as you command, because it says handicap, do we have one on the other side? Against the grass, is there a pole there? Yes, because I backed, not into it, but I backed up to it tonight.
Almost into it.
Almost into it, so there's, there is a telephone pole on both sides, so you put the arrow, you know, you can have the arrow underneath pointing both ways.
Sure. Yep.
Okay.
Uh, toll day request.
I do have that. Again, this is Millville Fire Rescue, October twenty-fourth is their number one date, arraigned date of November seventh, nine AM to one PM, and it has been signed off by Public Safety and Highway.
Motion approved, toll day.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have oaths of office. I dropped the ball on myself for CMRPC, so I'm gonna do that. Hopefully Wednesday night, one of the ladies will be here.
Yep, and I did hear back from the member of emergency management that he will be coming in Wednesday night as well. The last, the fourth individual did come in today. And the third individual on the list, I know, was on vacation, I think, until Wednesday. And I haven't heard back. This is another situation, letters are sent, reminders are sent, emails, calls. So at some point, this is another situation for at least officials who are appointed by the board. You'll have to determine how you want to handle people that aren't in compliance. Where, again, we're very lenient, we're way beyond the deadline with this. They should have really been sworn in no later than July thirtieth. I mean, preferably July first, but.
So if he's on vacation, then at our next meeting.
Yes, so we'll put that on.
One of the ladies aren't here Wednesday night, I'll call them and see if they can come meet me here at a different time.
And then. The assistant town clerk is very amenable, I know she's actually gone to somebody's home and sworn them in at their home. So, you just give her a call, she'll, she's happy to meet you here. If you can't make it during the time the building is open, she'll, she'll meet you here when you need to be. But, a lot of people don't realize that if they're reappointed every year, they do need to be re-sworn in every year. It's not just you do it once and you don't have to do it again, so. That's it.
Okay, so now we're gonna do signatures, huh?
We'll do slot and swam.
Yeah, I don't care.
I'll make it real quick.
Yep.
The Green Community Committee is wanting to support an energy reduction policy for the municipal government. And basically, it makes sense in that, you know, to help us going forward, put some positive grants on energy reduction. A lot of mechanical stuff has been done, all the exterior lighting projects are done. I have no page there. What's significant about this is that fifty-four percent, if you look at the last page, fifty-four percent of carbon footprint is heating load. Electricity is twenty-four percent between the program and seventy-eight percent. Gasoline is a minor part of this, but yet, the committee on public safety has taken action to reduce gasoline consumption and police cruisers. But the significant point here is this is all under unit control. The temperatures you keep your rooms at when you're not using lights in that kind of room. So what's left is the public education part of it and town government and town facilities. People who, personnel to work with, be acquainted or practice energy conservation measures in accordance with what's proposed. Now, these are guidelines. So that's all I have to say about that, is just that I asked the board to review this and put this on the agenda for subsequent meeting at next year. We've already approved, you know, a policy on vehicle.
Yep.
So now, now what we need to do is approve a policy for energy reduction. Particularly for electrical use, which is a problem because costs are going up.
Is the vehicle, is that a bylaw or just a, is it a bylaw? So would this be a bylaw or just a policy?
In my estimation, all it has to do with a policy. The committee will work with various municipal facilities in educating and providing whatever. There's not much more we can do with the biggest energy user, except this part of it. We've done all the exterior lighting, we've done a complete weatherization project at the elementary school, that was successful. Isolated roof project. I have to see the building commissioner on Wednesday if he's here. But we're gonna be re-roofing the fire station. Isolated roof. So, we've got all the mechanical stuff on the way going. And once we exhaust this present grant, we'll be eligible for competitive grants, as I've indicated in the past. So if we do this, the chairman would.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, that's meeting.
Thank you.
Come on. So, we're gonna, uh, leave this meeting. Well, we can adjourn, we can do signatures, but, uh, we'll do our signatures. Then we'll adjourn from this meeting and enter back into the six A, uh, six PM meeting. Discuss the interview we just did for accounting.
Does the board want that on camera or should we have the cameras turned on?
To be fair, I would do it off camera.
So we have our initial thought processes that we were gonna have it done prior to?
Yep. So Tim, if you, once we adjourn this meeting, you can shut the equipment down. Which will be in just a minute. Okay, motion to adjourn the seven PM meeting and then re-enter the six PM meeting.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, you folks are all welcome to stay.